Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting of Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. It is a little after 5:15 PM. And we start off with a special meeting today and then move on to the regular agenda after the special meeting. Madam City Clerk, should we go with the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fruen.
Here.
Mayor Mohan.
Here. Okay. So the subject for today is the capital improvement programs, the CIP for fiscal year 2425, and the five-year plan. We will start off with the staff report from...
Mayor, if I may.
Mosley.
If I may, before Public Works team begin their presentation, just wanted to ask for a suggestion. So in abundance of caution and with a potential conflict of interest with Vice Mayor owning a property within 500 feet to the Bollinger Road project, I would like to ask Mayor for your permission to allow the staff to finish the presentation for the entirety of this project and open public comments, allow the public to make their comments regarding the entire CIP list, and then focus council's discussion on the non-Bollinger Road items so that Vice Mayor can participate in that discussion. I would also recommend a three-minute conversation for each of the council member out of the five minutes that council usually is allowed to, and then have a follow-up discussion, ask the Vice Mayor to recuse himself for the Bollinger item, and then for council to finish the remainder of this CIP list, if that will be at your discretion to approve that.
Yes, that sounds reasonable, and let me repeat what the city manager said. There will be a staff presentation for the entire item on the agenda, which is the capital improvement programs and the five-year plan. And after the staff presentation, there will be a public comment on the entire subject. And then the council, when we bring it back to council, we will only question staff on the non-Bollinger Road projects, and we will take three minutes each for that discussion. Repeat, only on the non-Bollinger Road projects. And then the deliberations will end. Vice Mayor, I request him to recuse himself, and then the council members can question staff on the Bollinger Road proposal, and then we will deliberate on the Bollinger Road project. Okay? All right. So go ahead with the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Thank you for having us tonight. I am Susan Michael. I am the Capital Improvement Program Manager, and next to me is Director Mosley, Director of Public Works, and will be doing the presentation tonight. Tonight, we'll share a presentation on the CIP, and we'll be asking for your input on that proposal. There's no action other than to provide input. A reminder that you can find more information on the current site, CIP projects, on the CIP dashboard, which is in the city's website in the Public Works section, or you can use the QR code that's shown on the screen here to get there directly. So there's two parts to the study session tonight, a very brief review of the past and current work and the achievements, and then brief notes about the existing CIP projects, and then a review of the proposal we're making for fiscal year 2425 and the five-year plan. And then we'll end by talking about next steps, inclusion in the budget process. So the achievements. We wanted to start by reviewing some of the achievements of the CIP. Finishing projects is a great achievement, and I'd like to take a moment to highlight those accomplishments. Just keep in mind that it takes a village to complete these projects. It's not just the CIP project managers and the consultants, it's also the teams working in the fields, with the facility, with the residents, with the infrastructure, with the programs, that make it all possible. So we wanted to sincerely show our appreciation for the efforts of everybody who has contributed to the success of these projects. So I'm going to go through all this rather quickly. But we have completed two projects at Wilson Park. We had a ribbon-cutting ceremony in the last fiscal year. We've also completed two storm drain projects. You know, one of them was the emergency project at Stevens Creek Boulevard in Calabasas Creek, and the other is the Pumpkin Fiesta Storm Drain Project, Phase One. We are presently working on the changes at the intersection of Deansha and McClellan for McClellan Bike Corridor, Phase Three, and that will be followed by some bike lanes restriping on Deansha in that area. And we're also looking to have, we've ordered two solar-powered electric vehicle charging stations that will be, they're supposed to be delivered in March. We'll see how it goes. They should be here soon, but this will definitely be before the end of the fiscal year. And we're also starting the Regnart Road improvements work in April, and that's also only supposed to last a couple of months, so cross your fingers that that will go well. It's an important improvement. And the Blackberry Farm Pool improvements, we have plastered the pools. That's very exciting, and they've been refilled. We have to do the ADA work now, and the aim is that that will all be done before the pool opens this summer. And Memorial Park is, the specific plan is coming to you for consideration at the next meeting. So the full list of completed projects is in Attachment B for your reference. The existing CIP projects. So there are 20 active projects in addition to the six that are listed as nearly complete in our previous slides. If you look at the existing projects, when we looked at the existing projects, we wanted to evaluate their status, and we feel strongly after our review that we need to continue work on all of these projects. The reasons are noted in Attachment B, but I wanted to give you a short summary. Some of the projects, or most of the projects, are in contract, and so stopping these projects would be counterproductive and costly to the city. Other projects have important city projects or programs that are dependent on those projects, like the Silicon Valley Hopper. We need to develop charging stations for the new electric vehicles that have been purchased. A number of the projects are unglamorous, infrastructure improvements that are critical for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, like the Regnart Road Improvements Project. And some of the projects, we have grant money and/or in lieu fees or such similar things that if we didn't do the work, we'd have to give the money back, and it would be a lose-lose proposition for the city. So in the next slides, we'll mention some notable progress on some of these projects. You can find more notes on the status of all the existing projects in Attachment B in the project justification column. So we, for the facilities projects, some of the notable projects, the library, we finally have an agreement for the $1 million that we were, we started talking about a couple years ago. So we finally have that agreement, so we can start work on the courtyard and landscaping. The City Hall improvements, as you know, is on hold until we figure out what to do fiscally, and the City Hall Annex is dependent upon the City Hall project, so that is also on hold. The Lawrence Smithy Park and Trail Project is one of the things that we're making progress on. It's coming to council probably in June. We're in the SEQA process right now. We have to go to the Commissions first, so that's exciting. We do have a conceptual design we're considering. The park amenities are also being installed. We have a couple benches that are going to be installed near the dolas as soon as the ground dries enough. And the barbecue at Portal Park was actually finished installing today, so there's a brand-new big barbecue out there. The CIP project shepherding the streetlights transition to LED will go out for bid soon, as will the bridge maintenance projects since we received the green light from Caltrans. There are more stories to tell, but I can confirm that the CIP is going in a good direction, producing good results for the residents that they can directly benefit from. So we have what we think is a productive and economically responsible proposal for the council to consider for this year, for the fiscal year 2425 CIP. We're looking for council input on this proposal. Earlier, I mentioned why we believe it is in the city's best interest to continue with the existing projects, and we have similar considerations for deciding on which projects to propose. There are five delineated criteria that we apply. Our highest priority projects are those that are necessary to protect the safety of the public. We do take in feedback from the community, the council, and Commissions. One of our biggest resources for direction is the master plans that have been generated in the recent past, and there are projects that are subsequent phases of existing projects that we need to continue and some that need to be reactivated. We do aim to do projects that are fiscally responsible for the city. This includes being responsible with our resources, like staffing. We don't want to overcommit to projects that we can't activate, and that also includes, of course, grant funding. So on the following pages and in Attachment A, you'll see the icons in this legend to show which priorities the projects address. The proposal for fiscal year 2425 includes six new projects and additional funding for three existing multi-year projects. Two projects on the list, namely roadway safety improvements and McClellan Road Bridge, have grants that were already accepted by council in previous sessions, but the projects themselves need to be included in the city's budget as CIP projects. So before I turn this over to Director Mosley to go through the new projects, I wanted to point out that of the six projects, three of the projects on this list are included mainly because we received grants to fund the projects now. One project is a response to a state mandate to make our city's fleet vehicles, electric vehicles. One is health and safety-driven due to a failing storm drain outfall, and the photovoltaic project is a chance to secure clean energy and big savings in our utility costs. With that, I pass it off to Director Mosley.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. I'm going to briefly talk about the proposed projects, and when I say briefly, I mean I'm going to talk about all the other projects except for this one briefly. With this, I'm going to provide a little more background, just based on some emails that I saw today regarding this project. First off, the Bollinger Road corridor design is a heavily grant-funded effort that will enable the city to perform a traffic analysis to inform future decisions. It'll enable public outreach and will help to prepare design drawings for any future construction that the city may decide to move forward with. As indicated, I've seen a number of emails today regarding this proposal, and there seems to be a misconception of what it entails. So I'm going to dive into this item a bit deeper than the others, and I'll start with some background. A conceptual study for safety enhancements along Bollinger Road was prepared in 2021. This was initiated in response to a city council-approved city work plan item. This work plan item was recommended by the Bike Pet Commission, and it should be further noted that the Bollinger Road safety improvements are envisioned in the bicycle transportation plan, and there was a fatality that occurred along this stretch of road that resulted in this item receiving additional priority. The study was prepared and came up with two concepts for improvements. Concept A provides more extensive safety measures for bicycles and pedestrians, but it proposes a reduction in travel lanes from two to one in each direction. Concept B maintains the two traffic lanes and focuses mainly on intersection improvements that enhance safety. A traffic analysis is needed in order to provide a data-driven recommendation on the preferred concept. At the time of the study, a traffic analysis was not conducted for numerous reasons, the main reason being that traffic patterns were impacted due to the COVID shelter-in-place orders, and the city would not have received quality data at that time. Because the city could not provide a data-driven recommendation, neither option was recommended at the time the study was completed. This proposed CIP item will enable the city to perform the necessary traffic analysis that will help us to verify if Option A is even viable, Option A being the one that reduces lanes down to one in each direction. Once the city has this information, there will be public outreach, and we will return to city council with a recommendation requesting direction on which concept is preferred prior to any further steps being taken. After we receive this direction, the next steps would include engineering design for the recommended option, and all of these efforts are approved actions under the grant agreements. So all of this work is covered by the grants, or by the portion of the grant for the project. The effort proposed tonight does not include a request for construction or construction funding. We will return to city council for approval before any construction activities occur. One additional item I will add, and which will be a theme tonight, is that there are a lot of grant funding opportunities out there for capital improvements. However, many of these opportunities require preliminary, or at least some form of engineering design, in order to be viable for that funding. The item tonight, once a concept is chosen, would align the city to apply for various grant opportunities that may fund any future construction efforts. So in short, no decision has been made on which concept to pursue. The proposal tonight helps to provide the data necessary to make an informed recommendation. We will bring that recommendation back to city council prior to initiating any design efforts, and we are not asking for funding for construction of the project. We hope that this effort will enable the city to acquire further grant funds for any construction activities proposed. So that's briefly this project. Next slide, we'll talk about the next project. This project here is, again, a heavily grant-funded project. We've received $3.2 million in external funding. There is a 10% city match. This will enable the city to install along many of our arterials, speed feedback radar signs, the signs when you drive by, and it tells you how fast you're driving. These improvements help to alert drivers of how fast they're going and oftentimes causes drivers to slow down. Additionally, it'll help us to install high-friction pavements at many of the intersections, which helps people to stop quicker at intersections if potentially somebody walks out in front of them or if the light turns red. So these are very good safety improvements, and we receive grant funding to cover the vast majority of them. Next slide. This is the big item that we're proposing, and this is basically installation of solar panels at a number of city facilities. We are asking for funding for this project because we have certain deadlines that we need to hit. Back in 2022, Susan Michael, CIP manager, and the sustainability manager at that time, Andre Dvort, applied through PG&E for NEM II applications. NEM II is the old rates at which the city can sell back energy to the grid. Those rates are higher than the current rates, so we got those applications in, and we're looking to take advantage of those applications before they expire. By taking advantage of those applications, installing this infrastructure, we foresee about a half a million dollars a year in electric savings. So that's a substantial savings for the city, and we think that that's a good project to move forward. We do believe there are a lot of grant opportunities for this project, and in fact, we had a consultant recommend that the Inflation Reduction Act would probably cover about $1.9 million, and that's right off the bat. So that's a good chunk of that, 6.3, and we believe there's other grant opportunities, including Silicon Valley Clean Energy and maybe others. Next slide, please. The next proposal is an electric vehicle charging station expansion at the service center. As Susan had mentioned earlier, the state has mandated that a certain portion of our fleet vehicle purchases be, or I should say, zero emissions vehicles. That typically means electric vehicles these days. In 2027, that requirement goes to 100% of new vehicle purchases, need to be zero emissions. So we need to be prepared to be able to serve our vehicles at that time, and this sets up that infrastructure for us. Next slide. The next project we're looking to initiate is the McClellan Road Bridge reconstruction project. We received $5 million in grant funding last year through Evan Loa's office. Just this week, we received another $850,000 in grant funding through Congressman Kana's office, and there are a lot of other grant opportunities out there, but as indicated previously, we need some level of engineering design in order to be able to qualify for those. So we are initiating this project at this time to start that preliminary design so that we can try and cover the remaining funding gap with grant dollars in the near future. This project needs to move forward, and it's all external funding thus far, and we hope to make it fully externally funded. And next. And the last new major project this year is the Vi Avenue Outfall. There's an outfall off of Vi Avenue that drains into Regnart Creek. It is the old standard corrugated metal pipe. The bottom is rusted out. There was an emergency project last year at Calabasas, kind of the same issue. We're finding that this is a regular occurrence. We're actually currently out inspecting all of our outfalls to see what other outfalls need work before we have any disasters. But this is standard repair work for our Public Works Department, and so we're pushing this project forward to correct that. And then we have kind of three additional funding projects. We have our annual ADA improvements. These are necessary to kind of continue to address our ADA transition plan. We have the fifth year of our annual playground replacements, where we're replacing playgrounds. We're finishing up the Creekside Playground as we speak. There are other playgrounds in the works. And then we have our annual infill project where we facilitate installation of streetlights where requested by residents and where we believe they make sense for enhancing safety or visibility. And that, those are the projects that we're proposing for this year. And let me hand it back to Susan.
Thank you. I wanted to go over our five-year plan. For next year, we're proposing to tackle the shade structures that have been previously discussed. We have them at five different structures. We're hoping that they would be revenue generating as they might improve the picnic areas and the reservations. And also, the Parks and Rec System Master Plan does make a priority of creating shade in our parks, so it makes sense. We've also got on our next year plan, hopefully, to renovate the golf course, to do the minimal repairs project that we talked about in previous feasibility study that we did, as well as the ponds, making that a living green entity rather than a concrete basin. So we are in the process of applying for grant funding for all of these projects, so we hope that we'll be successful before next year. And then our next proposal is, in the fifth year of the CIP, to hopefully, once again, receive more grant funding to do the construction phase of the Bollinger Road Corridor project, whatever we decide it would be. So we're trying to work within the capacity of the capital reserve, and that's why the grant funding will be important, just so that we stay fiscally responsible in that sense. And so the summary. So we do have the six new projects and the three multi-year projects we are proposing additional funding for. This is 8.25 million in proposed funding. I thought it was important to note that the grant funding that we've received to date exceeds the amount of funding we're asking city for, so it's about 50/50 or there. With the current capital reserve fund is 14.8 million, and after this year's fiscal, this year's CIP program, it would have $6.5 million remaining. So the next steps, ultimately, the CIP is a line item in the city's overall budget that will be coming to council for review in May. Before that, the CIP next would go to the Planning Commission in April to review, have the Planning Commission review it for conformance to the city's general plan, which is what we do every year. So the action tonight is only to receive the presentation and provide input on the proposal. There isn't a specific action that's requested other than that. Thank you, and we are open for questions.
Thank you, Manager Michael, and thank you, Director Mosley. We are taking public comments now, and how many cards do we have, City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I have four requests to speak from Community Hall, and virtually I have four hands raised.
Okay. So each speaker will get three minutes to make his or her public comment.
So first, we'll begin with Joel Wolfe, followed by Jennifer Sharon, followed by Dolly Sandoval. Welcome, Joel.
Good evening. Mayor Wolfe. And Vice Mayor Fruen.
My name is Joel Wolfe.
I'm the Vice Chair of the Bike Pet Commission. In Cupertino.
I've lived in Cupertino for 38 years.
Your microphone is cutting out a little bit, Joel.
You can start with your full three minutes.
I'm speaking today in regards to the Bollinger Road Corridor Design Project. I strongly support moving forward on this project and elevating the CIP priority status from low to high. If that hasn't changed, the document I saw had low status. I point out that this corridor has seen two pedestrian fatalities and one severe injury in the 10-year period from 2012 to 2022. In this time period, there have been 42 injury collisions on that corridor, and this is all data that I just, I pulled from the recently submitted Vision Zero study. This corridor has been identified as part of the High Injury Network in the 2024 Cupertino Vision Zero Draft Plan that was recently issued. It is also one of the plan's top seven recommended project for safety improvements. The corridor has also been identified as in need of safety improvements in Cupertino's 2023 Local Road Safety Program. And then going way back to the 2018 Cupertino pedestrian plan, identifies that same corridor as a high injury network, and that's based on data from 2005 to 2014. So I believe the, it's this, the original document showed that it was, did not get the green safety icon, but the presentation by Chad showed that it was on there, which I think it is a safety-related project, and it certainly is of concern. And I just want to cite a first guiding principle in Cupertino's Vision Zero Plan. The draft plan states that "Safety is our highest priority. Human life is more important than speed, convenience, or property." So I urge the council to include this project in the 2024 to 2025 CIP and associate a five-year plan, and to elevate its priority status to high. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Next, we have Jennifer Sharon, followed by Dolly Sandoval, followed by Byron Rovino. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor Mohan, city council members and staff. I'm speaking today only on behalf of myself. I live off Miller Road, about a quarter mile north of Bollinger Avenue. So I'm not only driving Bollinger all the time, I also bike on it and walk on it to get to Safeway or to get to Trader Joe's or Home Depot or whatever. When I bike, I try not to be on Bollinger if I can. There's just too many dangers, whether from speeding cars, being doored when riding next to cars in the bike lane. So I basically have to make a scary crossing across Bollinger when I'm going to Trader Joe's. I'm also very familiar that Chair, oh, excuse me, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Wolfe of the Bike Pet Commission mentioned about... Pet Commission mentioned about how it highlighted many of the safety issues that we see for all methods of transportation on this particular road. And the recently released draft of Vision Zero echoes that in many ways. I ask today that you do support this particular CIP item, and that, because that work will reflect our prioritization of safety for all of our residents. You've received, hopefully, I believe, over 50 emails today on this particular issue, saying this is a priority and because of safety in this corridor. And that's been well documented, so I won't go into that anymore. It doesn't provide, it doesn't change lane structure at this point. It is merely a traffic analysis and a study, and I think Director Mosley really explained that extremely well. It's a modest outlay, outlay for the support of improving safety in our, in our city. With the hard work of city staff, Cupertino has received 80% of the money for the analysis and design. That's wonderful. This leverages our city resources extremely well. The CIP item is a reasonable outlay for the potential benefits, and I urge you to support it today. I also wish to say one last, one last comment since I have a minute. I want to thank staff for such an organized and comprehensible presentation and information. It was all there in the, in the agenda item, and I really appreciate it. So thank you so much. Thank you for considering my input and your work on behalf of Cupertino.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Dolly Sandoval, followed by Byron Rovino, followed by Ariane Doshi. Welcome, Dolly.
Thank you. I think for the first time ever, I'm going to try and use this document camera, so. First, Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for hearing us tonight during public comment. And again, I also want to echo my thanks to staff for having a clear and concise description here, staff report. Okay, council, participation time. Raise your hand if you know where this intersection is. I'm thinking you can see this picture that we can see. Okay, couple of you, good. Okay, this is a picture of the Alderbrook Lane-Bollinger intersection. When one stops their car at the limit line, like we were all taught to do when we learned to drive, if you look to the right, you notice it's a very clear view. You've got a bus stop, you've got a red curb, et cetera. If you stop at that same appropriate limit line, you see that there is very little visibility on the left-hand side looking towards Miller. So you might want to creep out a little bit, but when you creep out a little bit, you have to remember to look to the right, because often we have students riding their bicycles and pedestrians walking on that, that side of the street to cross Alderbrook. Now, another picture of that same view is this curb cut that you can hopefully see here with a little bit of a red curb. But part of that red, that red curb doesn't go all the way to the end of the curb cut, so while there's only one car parked closest to that corner at the moment, often, there's somebody who lives there with an SUV. So as a driver coming out, I have to pull way up into the intersection to even see if it's safe to turn left at this intersection. So I put on my hazards, although you can't see it because I ran out of ink, but this is how far up I have to pull at that particular intersection in order to see if I can even attempt to turn left. So I believe that there should be a high priority on this study item. I encourage the City Council this evening to approve the Bollinger Road Corridor Design as part of the CIP. I think when you're think, when you have an offer of $100,000 input, or 106, I think, for $400,000 plus, that's a one-to-four return on investment. And I don't know about any of you or anyone in the audience, either physically or online, but I'd take one-to-four any day. So I appreciate you considering this tonight, and I hope you'll help study the issue to make possible changes for pedestrian and cyclist and car safety. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Dolly. Next, we have Byron Rovino, followed by Ariane Doshi, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Byron.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm here to voice my support for the Bollinger Road Traffic Study, and a lot has been said already, but I've heard "Safety first," "Health and safety first," and this is a number-one health and safety item. There are people that have died there, and we need to do something, and this is your opportunity to do something quickly in, in this, in this year. So I believe it's a priority. It's been in the bike plan, and it's, when else can you get an 80% discount? So it's a deal, and you can do it now or pay 100% later, and in the meantime, keep your fingers crossed that nobody else gets killed there. So just gathering the information will help us learn what we need to do, and as Chad says, grant money can be available once you have a more articulated plan of what you need to do. And so I feel very strongly that this is a benefit to the community and a reasonable price for us to pay, and I encourage you to approve it as part of the 2425 Plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Byron. Next, we have Ariane Doshi, followed by Luis Sedadi, and then we will move to those who have requested to speak virtually. I see nine hands raised. Welcome, Ariane.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing me to speak to you. I'd like to encourage the council today to support the Bollinger Road Design and Traffic Analysis CIP Item. I think when we're thinking about this design, the safety of our residents should be placed in the utmost importance. Just this short stretch of road has, in the past few years, seen numerous casualties as well as near misses, and I think it's really important we keep that in mind when thinking if we should have this traffic design. Many pedestrians and cyclists actually avoid using Bollinger altogether because of these accidents we've had in the past few years, but these can actually be mitigated if we do a proper traffic design on Bollinger Road. And I think the CIP item to perform a traffic study and then make a design using that information would be crucial in the future. It would not set in stone, you know, any changes or construction. It would be very low cost, considering we already have 80% of the money that we need to make those changes. And so I think all in all, having that speed design would really help people, help cyclists have a much safer route on their way to school or wherever they may be going. I know for me personally, oftentimes I use Bollinger Road as a way of transportation, you know, going to school, going to home, biking back home. And I think it's really important that we make sure we have safe, safe measures on that road in particular. Oftentimes, when you're biking, you have cars directly opposing the flow of traffic, and so biking towards that, oftentimes, it can, you know, in some sense, make you feel naked because of the cars coming by at such a high speed. And so I think all in all, especially because it's not too costly, I think we should strongly consider supporting the traffic design and, and reduction in speed on Bollinger Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariane. Next, we have Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Luis.
Good evening. This is Luis Sedadi. I'm speaking to ask for you to please support the Bollinger Road Design and Traffic Analysis CIP Item. The safety of our residents should be given a highest priority. This short stretch of road has seen two fatalities in just the past few years, and many more serious accidents and near misses. There has been a lot of non-resident emails focused on their fear of interference with their traffic flow. They're pushing to block the proposed traffic study that is really meant for safety. Because of the hard and excellent work done by our, by our professional city staff, this Bollinger Road Study has already received grant funding over $425,000, 80% of the project. Please don't let our study lose the $425,000 grant money by removing the study. There are vehicles speeding above the, the limit, the curve road, and bike lanes next to park cars, which cause bike lane incursions and unsafe pedestrian crossings, including no marked crossing for one-half mile stretches. This CIP item is only to perform a traffic study and then to make a design using that information, and does not approve any construction changes. A human life is precious and beyond price. Please support the Bollinger Road Design and Traffic Analysis CIP Item. Thank you so much for your time and attention and support to making the city progress to ever being better. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. And now we will move to those who have requested to speak virtually. There are nine hands that were raised before the cutoff. We have San Ar, Lisa, and Tracy K. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Sheila and City Council. Since you have received no comments so far about the sub-items other than the Bollinger Road, let me begin with the other items, since that's what you will deliberate on first. I would like to request the council to deliberate on the extent of spend on the photovoltaic cells, and to assess out of the six properties that have been identified, what is the utilization of those properties and whether photovoltaic cell is necessary, especially if there is low to no usage in the after-hours when electricity is most consumed. 6.3 million is a steep bust to the city at a time when there's a budget deficit. We're seeing cuts in other parts. I understand grant funding may be available, but grant funding will not offset the entire cost. I also understand that the 500 case savings is an estimate. It is, it is likely it could be lower than that, and this could be several years in the making before you make up the spend that you have. And so, given the circumstances, I hope you will assess if you can reduce from six to three, for example. Perhaps you omit Blackberry Farm, because you may not need the utilization at Blackberry Farm after hours, even the site is, is dark after sunset and, and is unused. Perhaps you might also look at other sites where you can cut back, such as properties that have low utilization and are not used at all times of the day and, and all times of the, of the week. I also want to switch topics to the park shade structures. I'm disappointed as a resident of West Cupertino to see that, once again, we get light to no investment in our West Cupertino parks. I would like to request Public Works to prioritize Modern Vista Park as well as Varian Park, both of which are on the west side of Cupertino. As we have seen, you have made significant investments in CapEx for Joloman Park already, and same is the case for other parks. I ask that you please consider equitable spending across your parks, including funding the shade structures for Modern Vista Park, and particularly Varian Park, where there is less shade in that vicinity of the, of the picnic areas. Those are well-attended parks, and hopefully you will consider that as well. I also want to bring to your attention the CapEx spend that is happening through this budget cycle seems no different than prior years. I would like to ask council members to deliberate on what are you doing differently? We have asked residents to take some pain, we have made some cuts in a number of difficult areas, things that we really appreciate and prioritize for the city, such as our city street trees, our, our road pavements. I keep hearing the mayor talk about our pavements will not be noticed. That is simply not true. We noticed the pavement issues on Stevens Green, which is highly trafficked. We noticed the pavement issues on Foothill Boulevard, which is highly trafficked because of the county trucks there, and so please do not sacrifice our pavements. Please prioritize the same and make sure that our pavements are resurfaced. So please look at what you can cut. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Lisa, followed by Tracy K, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. First and foremost, thank you very much, incredibly much, Chad, for taking the time to go over what was sent in today and maybe yesterday, and highlight the one item, because I think clearly you understood, we all understand, that was the biggest item on this list tonight as far as public comments. And I'm not sure there's a whole lot of people that aren't residents that were commenting, but someone else made that comment, and I don't even know how you do that. And even if they were perhaps from San Jose, but they live on Bollinger or nearby, it's very appropriate for those comments as well, as anything that gets done beyond the study will hopefully and require San Jose putting some money in the pot, a lot of it. So, again, thank you, Chad and Susan, because both of you always do a really good job at your presentations, and I feel like you do listen, and I know that you are welcome to, welcoming to people who want to talk to you before we're actually right here right now. So I appreciate that a lot. Thank you. And you've got a tough job, and you did a great analysis. So if I could just add, if you move forward with the study, could you just please keep track of all the emails that you got today, so that when, if it comes, when it comes back after the study, you can revisit these comments, maybe reach out to people that made them? And if there's a study that shows some options, well, regardless, the study's paid for, I think it is absolutely imperative that there's extensive outreach to the public and recognition that our roads are going to change within the next few years, as all cities are building taller and bigger, and more and more people are coming and going. We had close to 2 million square feet of office space coming, which will bring in more people. These roads, Bollinger and the, and the roads to it, big and small, will all have an impact, and you will risk people going into neighborhoods to get off of Bollinger if it's one lane. But I won't, I'm going too far. Also, please consider, this is off-point, sort of, there's a bike rodeo or some kind of bike edu, biking education for safety. This city and all of this county need the same kind of thing for drivers. We have really poor drivers. They're really bad, and education would hopefully go some direction in helping the fatalities and the accidents if people drove the way they were supposed to.
Thank you, Lisa. Next, we have Tracy K, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Zhang Yang. Welcome, Tracy.
Hello, City Council. Thank you for your time this evening. I just wanted to comment that it would be nice if in the plans for the Bollinger Corridor that other options could be listed out. You know, there are ways to slow down traffic. I support the need for safer roads and reducing accidents, but, you know, there are speed radar signs. It sounds like there's a greater need for better delineated crossings. None of these things seem to require eliminating road, eliminating lanes. And so I think the public might feel a lot more comfortable with this plan if there's reassurance in the CIP specifically stated that you're not going to be eliminating lanes, but that you would be taking measures to, to slow down the speed of cars. There's many ways to do that without eliminating lanes and creating separate, like entire bike lanes. And then, you know, secondly, I understand that this item has been reprioritized because it's partly grant-funded, but you would need to still, for the construction portion of seeing a lot of grant funding, to, to meet the 4 million forecasted need. And so I just question, you know, why, when the city is cutting services left and right, you know, a $4 million project would be suddenly elevated to top priority from low to high? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tracy. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Zhang Yang, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, City Council and staff. I want to reiterate what Lisa Warren said about thanking Chad Mosley and Susan Michael for excellent presentation and materials. They're always clear, concise, and to the point. First, the photovoltaic projects, 6 million, I agree with San Ar that possibly you should look at them and reduce it. We have solar, and NEM 2 is critical. NEM 3, if you're stuck with it, does nothing. So the staff, having put applications in and gone at these, the NEM 2 is very important, and you need to take advantage of it. That said, Blackberry Farm and a few other... That said, Blackberry Farm and a few others could be eliminated, and you could reduce it, but still take advantage of the NEM 2 category. It also sets you up for emergency preparedness, because if you get that and then you install batteries later, you could set it up for earthquake preparedness, et cetera. And also, the 30%, I don't know how government tax works, but right now, there's a 30% tax credit for installing or messing with solar. So, I agree with San R. that just reduce it, but take advantage of it. With regard to the charging stations, please, please do bids. Make sure that we get the best bang for our buck. And for Bollinger, I am concerned because in the write-up, it says, under project justification, the traffic analysis would determine the potential for the road diet, alternative A, from the 2020 feasibility study. This tells me, it reads like that's your plan. And as Tracy had said, don't require that. There are many, many things that can be done without reducing the lanes. And that's the fear, is that if someone says yes to this project, that's what's going to happen. We don't want that. That said, I think that Bollinger does need some safety, but I agree with Tracy that there are a lot of things you can do that don't require a lane reduction, and we've got housing and office coming both in San Jose and Cupertino that impact this road. Please be thoughtful with our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Zhang Yang, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Nan Jia. Welcome, Zhang.
Hi, this is Zhang Yang. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, City Council members, to bring up this topic. I think first, I would like to recommend you to make sure of enough outreach for the Bollinger corridor project. As for myself, I have been resident there for like 10-plus years, and I were either biker or the pedestrian on my road, although I didn't use it every day. So, I think the main issue is, I received the first survey, but I have no knowledge about a second survey. So, I strongly recommend you to redo the outreach with more recent updates and to ensure all the neighborhoods, not only the Cupertino neighborhood, because we are sharing the road with 95129, Western House area, not to mention they're also part of Cupertino's school district. To make sure you have enough outreach to all the impacted residents to get their feedback before making a decision. Personally, you know, with the previous option A and option B, I would strongly prefer option B, because I'm a biker myself, and also looking some of the past extent data, I realize actually a lot of injuries are happening at the crossing, where either there's a traffic light or there's no traffic light. I guess a lot of happens is, you know, the light turns green, people start walking, but there's a car wanting to turn right and fail to yield to the pedestrian or the biker. So, I think those kind of things could be solved much easily than, you know, building up a whole big project, reducing the lanes, and building up all the protection, corridor through the whole section, that impacts a lot more other families who has to use that for daily commute, not only, you know, whoever want to cross that section, but even for the local residents, as I am. I use that every day. So, please be thoughtful. I fully agree with the comments previously mentioned by Tracy and previous speaker. Making such a decision, please be thoughtful about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Nan Jia, followed by Herve Marcy. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Council members and staff. Thank you for an excellent presentation. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a Cupertino resident. I'm speaking tonight regarding the CIP projects for FY 2024-25. In particular, I support the funding for the Bollinger Road corridor design. This is a dangerous street, as your previous speakers have indicated, and it's been well documented. It's difficult because it's a shared roadway with San Jose, which also recognizes the safety issue. The CIP project is to do a traffic study and identify alternatives to the current situation. The actual project would not be funded until after completion of the design phase. As we are only too aware, the city faces fiscal challenges. This particular project has external funding, a $425,000 grant that is not city money. If this council rejects the project, that money goes to another city to improve their street. Cupertino is left with an unsafe roadway and no money to fix it. Let me point out that two members of this council voted to reject $400,000 in state funding to reimburse the city general fund for housing element expenses. Instead, these two members voted the city pay for all housing element expenses to the tune of $1 million to $2 million. This was fiscal irresponsibility. I urge those two council members and the rest of the council to approve this project and the grant funding for $425,000. This city can't afford to have more fiscally irresponsible behavior. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have Nan Jia, followed by Herve Marcy, followed by Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Nan.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, hi. I also want to speak about the corridor project. I live on Wunderlik near Bollinger, and I agree that safety is important and also back with kids. However, I think reducing lane would not make it better. I think it will make the congestion worse, especially during school start and end time, and then more cars may be forced to drive in the residential area, which may make it more dangerous to pedestrians and bikers. So, I would, if I bike, I would avoid Bollinger, I would bike in residential area, but if the cars drive in the residential area, then that would be more dangerous. That's my opinion. And besides, if it's more congested, it will add more pollution to the environment as well. This is my point. And also, I want to speak about the outreach, because I know many people didn't hear about this project before. We just heard it yesterday, and I hope we could have more community outreach for this project and the ongoing updates. Once the, I don't know, the variable, yeah, once it's approved variable, I would like to see the results of, for example, projected congestion before we make the approval decision. And also, I would like to know where we can voice our opinion. Shall we write the emails? Do we come to meetings? Are there any other ways to voice out? And lastly, when will we decide which proposal to take? And we ask more transparency. That's, yeah, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Herve Marcy, followed by Connie Cunningham. And that concludes the speakers that raised their hand within the stated time limit. Welcome, Herve.
Hi, my name is Herve Marcy. I'm the chair of the Bike Fed Commission, but speaking only in my name. I'm speaking, and if you hear some shouting outside, it's because I'm coaching my son's team at Little League at Wilson Park, and there is a game right now. But I thought it was still very important to me to speak in favor of the project or the study for the Bollinger Road. It is an extremely unsafe road. I rode my bike on it. I find it absolutely terrible. It's dangerous, doesn't feel safe. And I'm here to speak in favor of the study, because it's a very non-committal way to look at things. If you don't have a good plan, you cannot make things better. And as I said, the Bike Fed Commission has voted unanimously for it, and I think, of course, the city will, as usual, do the community outreach and will figure out a solution to make sure that things are safe for everyone and that people can go from A to B, whatever means of transportation they want to use. But if you don't do a study, then nothing is going to happen, and this intersection and this road is going to be still completely unsafe, and we still might experience some casualties and incidents and accidents, and that would not be a good look for a city that tries itself on trying to target a vision zero of having zero casualties. So, as I said, I will be brief, but would strongly ask you to support the study for Bollinger Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our final public commenter will be Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor Moen, Vice Mayor Fruen, council members and city manager. My name is Connie Cunningham. I'm a 36-year resident, commissioner, but speaking for myself only. I was very impressed with the presentation that Susan Michaels and Chad Mosley did, and I want to thank them very much for making it so clear and easy to understand. On pages three and four, I particularly wanted to just agree with the priorities that you prioritize health and safety, and council commissions are community priority projects that have secured external funding. And on page four, that this year's specific emphasis has been placed on projects that utilize non-general fund sources. Obviously, you're working hard to meet funding issues as well as the most important thing, which is safety and health of residents. So, thank you for that, and I also wanted to just say that, oops, oh, maybe I said everything. Oh, I know. I was just going to say that I do agree with everyone who talked about the Bollinger Road. I have driven on Bollinger Road. I have a dear friend who's in her 80s who drives out of East Estates Drive onto Bollinger and go to Safeway and Trader Joe's. It's dangerous there. I think it's absolutely critical that we do the safety study that you've talked about here. So, enough said, lots of people have said it. Thank you for your time and your work on this.
Thank you, Connie. Mayor, no further speakers?
Okay. Thank you to everyone who made the public comments this evening. We will now move on to council member questions of staff on non-Bollinger Road projects only. I emphasize non-Bollinger Road projects only. Each of us gets three minutes. Three minutes. We've, I don't see any lights. Councilmember Chow, three minutes, please.
Okay. So, first, thanks, staff, for a very, really good agenda packet, including continuing to include all identified projects in master plans and then giving the prior criteria used to determine priority. And especially, thank you for proactively getting funding. But since we are cutting service left and right, and we are raising service fees, but we are not making any cut for existing CIP projects, I do wonder, is there any possible way for the existing projects? We could postpone some of them or maybe reduce to certain percentage? For example, we didn't use to fund playground replacement every year. The annual funding started only more recently, and ADA improvement. And these are just examples. I'm just wondering, since we are cutting everywhere else, it doesn't seem right that we are cutting pennies, but we are continuing to spend thousands.
If I may, through the mayor. Thank you for your comment, Councilmember Chow. We did look through the list, and we would be making recommendations of further cuts if we could. We're open to suggestions from council, of course. That's why we're here. I would also just remind you that we have made significant cuts in the program last year. We cut out everything that we weren't working on, and we didn't see a near future for that. The way we figured is that we could come back to council when that became a priority again and ask for a new approval and funding.
And then, since we are adding new projects, and then, some of these projects that, existing ones are designed, and we haven't even had funding for construction, so do we have any idea how much more the city would have to invest in the future for construction for any of the current design projects? I think we have quite a few of them.
I think with respect to the CIP documents, it does indicate what the proposed cost of those projects would be. We don't know how much grant funding we'd be able to secure for those projects until we actually put those applications in. We're trying to be transparent on, you know, like, for example, Bollinger Road, we anticipate that being a $4 million project. We don't have any grant funding for that, so we need to get the design in place in order to, you know, reach out and get that grant funding.
I mean, the existing ones. For example, the, I think we have the, there's the Unit Tammy and Inu Trail, and those are only in design phase. And then, the Stevens Creek Boulevard, some of those, we don't have funding for construction. Stevens Creek Boulevard bike path, we don't have full construction for. And Mary Avenue bike path, a lot of those, we got design money, but we don't have money for construction.
And I can provide just brief responses to that. For Tammy and Inu, we are continuing to look for additional grant dollars for construction. One of the reasons the Stevens Creek Phase 2A has not progressed is because we're looking to fund much of that construction with grant funding. The design has been ready for quite some time. We're just trying to get grants to actually be able to build that. And with respect to Mary Avenue, we did get bike lanes on that road at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moore? Three minutes, please.
So, I provided this in written communications. I'm going back to the City Hall project because it was queued up, and I would like to understand why it was just put in the queue when there was, as the city found out back in 2005, that the seismic retrofit that was done in '87, '88 timeframe was insufficient, and it was not properly designed to have the EOC within the building. And this is just a little history review of the subcommittee that reviewed the City Hall and came up with different recommendations there for it. Then, we had the grand jury report, a house divided, and in that report, city staff voiced concern that their workplace, City Hall, had not been renovated and seismically improved. Although the 2015 City Council allocated funds for the renovation, the monies were subsequently redirected to expand the city library. Certain staff regard the present City Council's unwillingness to fund the renovation as confirmation that their health and safety concerns are not a priority. And then, the City Hall Subcommittee came up with, along with staff and Susan Michael, you came up with a beautiful table here of all different options that the city could do, but we could do these seismic retrofit, provide that safety for the city staff in case of an earthquake, and security for our existing EOC, because we don't have the Tory building completed, for seven, less than $8 million. Now, I would also like to talk about Bollinger Road, and I think that City Council is really at a disadvantage because we haven't seen the Vision Zero Plan.
Just a point of order.
So, can't talk about it? Can't talk about it. Okay, so, will I get a chance to talk about it?
Yes.
Okay, it's coming up. Okay, so, I'll leave it at that. Thank you. So, the question is, why isn't City Hall in the queue? Thank you. I mean, like, queued up and getting worked on, because I'm worried about it. I don't want to, people are talking about the Bollinger situation. I don't want anything to happen with that building there. Thank you.
And very briefly to respond to that, back in October of 2023, council had provided us direction to look for partnerships, and that is the endeavor that we are currently working on, is to try and find some funding partners for that project.
So, with regards to that, that could take quite a bit of time. So with regards to that, that could take quite a bit of time and we could have the seismic retrofit be starting. And it could have actually, if we had gotten on the move last year, we could have probably had, if we were just going with the seismic portion completed. And then I do question with regards to the grant, I guess I'll have to let that wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. I have one question on the five-year plan is the Blackberry Farm Minor Repairs that's over $1 million, but I did see the notes. It says replacement of irrigation system is a high priority, but it's unlikely that this would be a major, it's likely that this would be a major project. So you are actively looking for grants to support it? Okay, yeah.
Yes, the minor repairs is an artifact from the study that was done previously. It was minor repairs in contrast to a new park. And we were given direction to proceed with the minor repairs of basically a $1 million plus irrigation system.
So it's amazing the city minor repairs to $1 million, whereas our household is probably $1,000. Okay, so my next question actually followed, it didn't come to me until Councilmember Moore mentioned it. Even with the retrofit of earthquake retrofit for the existing City Hall, do we have money for it?
Not currently, no.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Fruen?
Just two things. First, another thank you for a very well presented document. The only one piece of additional information I'd love to be able to see is I noticed that you've provided a nice legend for each funding type that's there. It would be wonderful to be able to see that broken down further in whether those funds are restricted or aren't, just so that we have that for our own purposes. But for the photovoltaic systems design and installation, you noted that you might be able to acquire something on the order of about $2 million in Inflation Reduction Act funding. Is there any additional grant funding that you think you'll be able to acquire for it?
We do believe with preliminary design that there would be other grant opportunities. We understand Silicon Valley Clean Energy is interested in projects that reduce electric usage and there's probably others available as well. We will be looking for those opportunities as we move forward.
Okay. And then for the ADA improvements at the Blackberry Farm Swimming Pool, what specific improvements are you looking to complete? And I know that you were, your intention was to get it ready by the summer, but how do you feel about that timeline?
No news is good news. We are starting with the contractor and they've been responsive. We're replacing grab bars that need to be replaced and leveling out the floors where we need to, the striping in the parking needs to be fixed to be more accessible correctly, that kind of thing.
Great, wonderful. Thank you so much. I think you've done a wonderful job of trying to prioritize all of this based upon what's already in our work plan.
Thank you for your presentation. I had a quick question about the photovoltaic systems design and installation, since that is the biggest component of the new projects that you're proposing. I'm assuming that the progress of the project will depend on you getting the grant funding. And if we don't get it, does the project stop? Does, or is it, or do we have to sort of front the general fund monies?
We need to front the general fund money to get that project off the ground. And as we get preliminary engineering plans, we'll be looking for grant opportunities to offset those CIP dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Chow, you're out of time, so.
Request more time since we have so many new projects being proposed.
Let's keep going and we'll come back to the Bolinger Road projects, the project. And this is the time, if I can request Vice Mayor Fruen to recuse himself.
Sure. So my husband and I own property on Bolinger Road pursuant to the government code and the advice of the city attorney's office. Out of an abundance of caution, I will be recusing myself from the rest of this discussion with regard to Bolinger Road.
Should we make comment on this first?
Pardon me?
Should we make comments on the non-Bolinger project first? We have only had question time, we didn't have comment time. We should be commenting because we are giving direction today.
You made the comments.
No, that was question.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. How do we do this?
Yeah, I think we should finish comments first, right?
So Mayor, if I just can remind you that we have about roughly 13 minutes left before the regular portion of the meeting. Okay.
We can continue to the regular meeting.
Let's see how it goes. And Vice Mayor Fruen is out. So let's start the council member questioning staff on the Bolinger Road project. And two minutes each, please. Councilmember Moore?
And this is where I was saying that the council's really at a disadvantage because we haven't been updated on the collision trends, which have already been studied. So this is a map of bicycle collisions throughout the city. And here's Bolinger Road. As you can see, there's a little cluster in this area. In Rancho Rinconada, there was a fatality up on Tantao. This is a map of high-risk corridors, of which we have many, including Homestead, and some which are somewhat surprising in this area. Which I don't quite understand, this is the Apple Tantao Leg. And I want to look at the pedestrians because there was a mention of fatalities on Bolinger. And I want to clarify that these were pedestrian collisions. And this is at Wolf, sorry, this is at Wolf. And this is, this was in daylight. And this one further down on Bolinger was, I believe, in the dark. And these are from 2015 to 2019. So adding bike lanes for pedestrian fatalities, if that is the case, I don't see how that's going to solve the issue. So I'm concerned about spending a lot of money that might not be as so wise. And I want to also, we talked about Danza Boulevard, is there going to be a plan for that area? And I know we've considered Homestead, but Homestead is very frightening to be driving on when the students are out. Thank you.
Councilmember Wei, two minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. I have a couple of questions. The first question is, the, this Bolinger Road study plan is a study, traffic study in order to provide council the next steps. Correct. We're not committing to any road design or anything.
That is correct.
Okay. So the second question actually follow up with Councilmember Moore's question, this funding is especially for this project. That's nothing to do with Homestead Project or other project that's being mentioned that has high, you know, high-risk areas, I'm pretty sure is not only, Bolinger is not only high-risk area, but this funding that was 20% matching from the city is just for this specific project.
And if I may just kind of take a step further, I was reminded by staff that this was actually a city work program from 2021 to study Bolinger Road. And that has, that city work program has been completed. So we're in the phase two of completing analysis using the grant money that's available to the city. I mean, for with every grant application, there is a matching criteria from the city and which is the $100,000 coming.
Thank you, City Manager Wu. And then so even if we, other high-risk area, we are concentrating on this area, on this specific project.
Correct. The grant is specific to this project.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore, I thought, I think you'd run out of your two minutes. Councilmember Chow?
Okay. So thank you for clarifying that the final decision on Concept A or B hasn't been determined. However, the project description in the agenda packet specifically mentioned road diet, parentheses, alternative A from the feasibility study. That's the specific alternative that would reduce four lanes to two lanes. So it gives the impression that the only option that will be considered is a reduction. But since we have received so many emails from residents who live in the immediate area, they don't want to see a reduction. So is it possible that with the design grant, we focus on options that improve safety for pedestrian, bicyclists and vehicle traffic without any land reduction? Is that possible?
Just briefly with the, with the grant funds, I should state, alternative A was the preferred option by the Bike Ped Commission. We can't recommend alternative A without a traffic analysis. Alternative B theoretically is two lanes, the traffic analysis would be much less stringent. We're not recommending alternative A, we're just stating that alternative A needs further study before we can recommend it. We may find that it's not feasible.
So Bike Ped Commission already recommended alternative A. So the fear of many of the immediate residents are not untrue because that's already been recommended.
They recommended it, but further analysis needs to be done.
Can the council today, if we have a majority, to direct the staff for the design to focus mainly on options of alternative B, which is focused on the different safety options that will improve safety for everyone without any land reduction? So that we focus on one more feasible option?
The council can provide the direction if they want.
We can. Okay, thank you.
Director Mosley, I'm assuming that the feasibility study and the design will cover all aspects, alternate A, as well as alternative B, as well as any others that affect safety and the design of the road. Am I right?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, so that ends, Councilmember Moore, your light is on. Do you have a quick comment?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify, you don't actually have this grant money yet? And would there be an option to apply it to another area instead if something else was desired by the council? And I do also want to clarify with regards to not having the money to work on City Hall, we are looking at an $8 million budget here, the CIP budget, which would cover the seismic improvements for City Hall. So I would like to understand why there is no appetite after almost 20 years of knowing that that building needs to have a seismic retrofit? And we, and we had the concerns from staff about their health and safety in that building, why we're not moving ahead with that? I don't understand.
Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Moore, can we limit our discussions to Bolinger Road since we have the vice mayor out?
And Mayor, just kind of a time check, we have about five minutes before the regular session to begin. So real quickly, we're here to collect feedback from council in terms of the CIP that is being proposed to you. As I mentioned earlier, this project in particular was on the city work program from several years ago. So staff is taking council's direction to proceed and also hearing from the community members to seek, actively seek grant money, and that's why we're here today. However, if council feels that this is not the right project to move forward, we'll certainly take that feedback as well. In terms of City Hall project, as Director Mosley mentioned earlier, per last false direction from council, we're actively looking for a new direction. We don't know what that looks like. Will we bring that back to council for further evaluation? Thank you.
Okay, so that ends the questions that council has for staff. Just looking at the time, city attorney, city manager, it's 6:40. Can we extend this by 15 minutes?
Yes, yes, council can vote to, council can continue hearing this item.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to extend it by 15 minutes.
Extend this meeting or continue to the regular meeting? These two different things.
No, this, this, CIP.
Then the regular meeting will be delayed.
Will be delayed.
Because in the past, we, what we have done is we continue this item to the regular meeting. So we start the regular meeting and then continue discussion after the oral comment on non-agenda item. I think that was what we used to do, right?
Council can elect either to continue the regular meeting till seven or start the regular meeting and continue this item. So I think the mayor made a motion to do the former.
I would like, we need the council, Vice Mayor to come back.
I would like to continue this, this sub-issue and finish it by, in 15 minutes. That's, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Can be voted by lights?
Shouldn't Vice Mayor need to vote on this too?
Pardon? Get a majority, we're fine. All right.
The motion carries with Fruen absent, accused.
Okay, so let's continue this discussion. This deliberations on Bolinger Road project only, two minutes each, and this is a discussion and deliberation amongst ourselves. Councilmember Wei?
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. So we've heard a lot of public comments and I do believe that this project is very clear. It is to do this study so that we, as council, can have options with the staff study. The staff is going to bring us options. And actually with the study, it's going to have extensive community outreach. So we're not here to decide option A or option B. We are here to authorize the staff to go ahead with taking advantage of the grant money, putting 20% matching, so it's one to four, which is a really good deal. And I read through the staff's supplemental reports, San Jose, CUSD and a couple other agencies also support this grant in order for us to get this grant for the Bolinger Road study. So we need to go ahead and then not limit anything because everything's open. And I read very clearly, this extended community outreach is part of the plan once it comes back to council. So I really want to say we should just go ahead and as proceed with staff recommendation and open-minded about what's going to happen and the community outreach will be there. I know this committee is worried about not getting outreach. So my question, actually, I probably don't need a question, to verify that all the residents, whether they live in Cupertino or West San Jose, if they're affected, they will be invited for public comments when it comes back to council. So I do believe that, I want to thank again for the staff for making such good explanations and details and all the going back to history, where it comes from. So I do want to say that as it's been repeated multiple times and a lot of comments, this is a project that's in our work plan that we are scheduling to go to. And I want to comment again, thank you for bringing it out with the grant possibilities. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Councilmember Chow, two minutes, please.
Yeah. There's, the, the, the safety for this corridor is very important. So I am, I really, that's why we supported this study back in 2021. But in the feasibility study, alternative B did not take away on-street parking. And so I would like to see more, the, the time is limited for the design. And I hope that there is more focus on different options, on the different variations of Concept B with separated bike lane, potentially removing on-street parking. And so that we include safe, improve safe bike, pedestrian safety and especially street crossings. safety, and especially street crossing safety, without reducing the traffic lanes. Thank you. So that, we will have C, B1, B2, B3 next time.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore, two minutes, please.
Okay, so just to be really clear, this is, the fatalities described on Bollinger Road are pedestrian collisions, so I tend to, looking at that, lean towards wanting to see a solution which addresses that issue. And I'm concerned about, particularly concerned about the more east-located fatality which happened in the dark. I have wanted to see a campaign called Bright in the Night, We're Bright at Night, which would provide reflectors and things for people so that they are more visible. And this intersection here at Wolf Road, I hope that we see more information about the Bollinger-Wolf intersection, for how that pedestrian collision happened. So I'm not, I am not persuaded that this is the most significant road that needs to have bike, separated bike lanes, and the, and the reduction of lanes, when I consider the bicycle situation in other parts of the city, but we definitely need something with regards to the pedestrian situation there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And my comment about the Bollinger Road project is, this is, just to reiterate, this is just a traffic analysis, a feasibility, a design project, and I'm assuming that it will come before the council several times before anything is actually done, anything in terms of construction or digging up the road happens. So I am comfortable with going ahead with the Bollinger Road design as it is, with the knowledge that we will see this project come back to us many times in the future. It's a good way of leveraging grant funding, and the ultimate intent is to increase safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, and residents, and this would be a good starting point, so I am good with it. So as far as we have deliberated on this, and let, I would like to bring Vice Mayor Fruen back, and we are not required to, to come up with a motion, we are just here to receive the presentation, and provide input, which we have all done, and should I wait for the Vice Mayor? Yes. You know. We were just concluding this discussion, we, all the deliberations have been completed, and since no motion is required, I was just saying that all we have to do is, hang on just a minute, to receive the presentation and provide input, and you've received input from us, as well as the public, and the next step would be to incorporate all the information and the feedback that you have received, and bring back, maybe at budget time, that would be the most reasonable time to bring it back, is, does that sound-
Mayor, we have not made comments.
Hang on one second. We're okay with that? Councilmember Chow, you-
We have not made comments on non-Bollinger items yet.
Okay, so how much time do we have? Do we-
You have about 10 minutes, I would recommend about a minute or two each.
Okay. How about a minute for each one, if you have something compelling about non-Bollinger projects?
I actually have a question. Is it possible to reduce the scope of photovoltaic system to maybe $3 million, so that we don't install it in too many places? Since it is really costly, and is it a possibility to extend it later?
Sir, the mayor, if I may, we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you. So in general, I hope that staff look into possible reduction overall in existing and new projects, since we are not clear of our financial future right now, and this is to be fair also to all the other service reduction fee increase that the residents will be experiencing. I love all the projects, just in good conscience, I am looking at how we can be more financially conscious. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow.
Any other comments about non-Bollinger items? Councilmember Wei.
Just a comment. I really, really appreciate the thoughtfulness of our staff, and what they did with the project is really economically responsible, and also productive. For example, the request to reduce it, if we can get funding for it, we're not going to reduce it. So everything is fluid and flexible. I just want to say, I'm very pleased with Susan, and, you know, Director, and all this work that you've done in the back. We thought we were just, you know, enjoying the holidays, but I can see the work that you've put into it, that day in, day out, that we don't know about it. So just, I really want to comment, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Fruen, one minute, please, on non-Bollinger.
Thank you. So to go back to my, my earlier comment, one of the things that I think might help this discussion about what the actual full expense of any specific project might be is, would be to describe perhaps in slightly more narrative, each of the restricted fund sources that some of these projects rely on, or that they leverage. So it's, it's very understandable for the public, for example, if there's an in-lug fee of some kind that we're going to have to give back if we don't spend it within a certain period of time, I think it's important for people to know that it's a question of, do we get it or not, period, and it's, it's money that, that is really somebody else's anyway. So I think that that's an important piece to maybe include in the future narrative, and perhaps also to compare it to what some of our CIP stuff looked like in the past, so that it's, it's very obvious to folks what's already been removed. That's the extent of my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Moore, one minute, please.
Okay, thank you. So I'm really excited about the shade structures. I thought originally that they were just going to be the, the shade sails, but they're actually structures, and I had talked a little bit about them potentially having a unique personality for each one, that they not, they're, they're not all cookie cutter throughout, throughout the city. There was a question about park equity, so if that could be addressed to make sure that these are being distributed fairly throughout the city. There were a couple of other parks, like Varian, that were mentioned, that could potentially have this. I'm glad to see the golf renovation ponds are getting worked on, and the minimal repairs with regards to the irrigation system, which is long overdue, and that's going to really help the environment. And also glad to hear that you're looking at those storm drains, so that we don't see another Calabasas Creek situation. I'm, I'm interested in the actual life of these, these culverts, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you. So that concludes the deliberations on the CIP project, and Director Mosley and Manager Michael, and City Manager, who, do you feel you have enough information to take us to the next step?
Yes, we do, thank you.
Great. Okay, so that concludes our discussion of the special meeting, and thank you to both of you for a wonderful presentation. We'll take a-
Five-minute break.
Five-minute recess. Thank you, and we'll reconvene at 7:00, 7:00 p.m. Thank you.